First item is the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four, two, zero. First item is to open the public hearing on an ordinance establishing a stormwater utility.
Motion to open public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to open the public hearing. Roll call. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. The public hearing is open. Anybody want to talk about stormwater utility? No. Is there anybody on Zoom that wants to talk about stormwater utility? Did we get any comments?
No, I did not receive any first class.
Okay. Did anybody else receive any comments, concerns? Okay, I'll take a motion to close. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Kara?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
I'm a yes. The public hearing is closed. Uh, ordinance two, zero, two, one, zero, six, zero, one, dash, four, the first reading on an ordinance establishing a stormwater utility. Is there a motion? We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Questions? Comments? Okay. Dave?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Passes four, zero, the first reading. Now, we're going to do a public hearing. We're going to open a public hearing for the 2021 fiscal year budget amendment.
Motion to open public hearing.
Second, we have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Robbie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Public hearing is open. Comments?
I have no comments. No correspondence?
No correspondence. Nothing? Nothing, probably none.
No one?
And no one in the public that wants to comment? Okay, I'll take a motion to close it.
Motion.
We have a motion and I have Dave and Kara. To close. Robbie?
Yes.
Kara? Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Yes, four, zero, it's closed. Now, we have a resolution two, zero, two, one, zero, six, zero, one, dash, two, nine, a resolution to amend and certify approved fiscal year 2021 budget.
Motion to approve, resolution to amend and certify 2021 budget.
We have a motion and a second. Questions? Is there anything you want to?
Everything is, was presented at the last work session.
Okay, don't. Kara?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
I'm a yes. The resolution passes four, zero. Okay, next item. It's approval of a consent agenda which includes regular council meeting minutes of May 18th, 2021, the city clerk treasurer report for March 2021, a renewal liquor license for JVs of and from, and a renewal liquor license for Casey's general store.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, any concerns about liquor licenses? Nope.
I did have one question on, on, uh, city clerk, clerk's report. Under, you had employee handbook work, I started, I started on the review and updates of the handbook with Mary.
Oh.
Yeah. Uh, I guess I was confused on that. That was from my report at the end of the.
Oh, okay, never mind. I've jumped in ahead. Yeah, that's okay.
You, we can wait until your, we can wait until you ask. That's okay. Sorry, I, I guess I, it snuck in on my.
Treasury.
Yes, that's why.
On me.
Okay, sorry.
Um, just a quick on the liquor license, uh, the, the website has now updated. And, um, I did give you a little bit of the outline that we're no longer able to print out the application like we were able to before and provide in your packet. So, um, all we can do is provide, um, the information of the, the name of the business, the address, and the license number. Um, but the good thing is, is that we have Intern Chief Lyra here who would love to have any questions.
Do we have any issues with the current, um, vendors wanting to renew?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four, zero.
Thank you, Lyra.
Vendor voucher claims list, we have two. The first one is in the amount $246,335.11. Motion to approve vendor vouchers claims list. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any questions? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four, zero. The second one is vendor voucher claims list number two and the amount of $80.
Motion to approve claims list.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Thank you. Three with one extension. Okay. Moving along. Public comments and or correspondence, and I know we all have something. I think you're here for the ATB, UTV, whatever that ballpark thing is, right? Anything else?
No.
Okay. Okay, I have, I'll start. The mayor forwarded an email to me from, uh, Milestones, which is that senior citizens program that provides meals. Anyway, they were looking for a partner for, it's called the Iowa Cafe Guide for Partners. And Lee mentioned that she forwarded it on to Joe at, uh, We Lead. But they were just looking for suggestions for places that the seniors could build for food. Uh, I received another one, and I don't know if anybody else got it from Delbert Morris. Anybody else get it? Oh, good. This, uh, this is, is Nick still with us? Nick's going to get this one.
It is.
Um, he grows, grinds golden apples. Then he gives a little history, blah, 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 blah. Anyway, if we would like a tree for a public park or someplace for the public in a public place, he will get us a tree and we just have to provide a stake and some form of fencing to protect the tree until it matures. You want to pass this to Lee and she can?
Um, Mayor Protemma, I, I can follow up. Unfortunately, the insurance company, um, really, uh, does not like us to have any type of
For tree trees?
in our, uh, public areas, uh, because they can be hazardous to fall on, especially apples.
Okay.
Um, so, um, but I will make sure on that and that will.
Oh, let's pass them. Then the third thing I have is, this, this is a concern that came from Alliance Group as they were putting out flags this year. On 15th and 16th Street, out in the subdivision behind the clinic, there is a 103 West 16th, a 103 East 16th, and they're separated by one house, 101 West 16th. Which the east and, and 15th Street is the same way. East and West was designated by Calhoun Street. But when you get out there to that subdivision, Calhoun Street is set off about three lots from the east-west designation because Calhoun Street, for some reason, Jahijah's out there, it doesn't follow. But it appears that the address labeling followed the original Calhoun Street, east and west designated. Anyway, it has been asked if it's possible to have a street sign put out there between, it would go between 101 West 16th and 103 East 16th. It, it appears to be very confusing because you have a 103 West and a 103 East, and it's only separated by one house.
Yes, and it seems as though we've had this discussion. Yes, I brought it up before.
And 15th Street is the same line. There's a 103 West, 101 West, and a 103 East.
Yeah.
So it was, the, the question was, is it possible to have a street sign put between the 101 and the 103 that would designate an east and a west?
Adam?
Is Adam napping or is Adam laughing at me? Adam's laughing at me.
He's thinking, that's how he thinks.
And I'm sure, I, I mean, these are locals that were totally confused. This wasn't somebody coming in from, you know, like a relative coming to visit or something.
It seems to me Kara brought it up before because there was postage or post office issue.
Yeah.
Or UPS delivery.
There's, there's been ongoing, uh, package and mail issues between the two residences where they think there's just one, 103 address, so it's like bingo when they can pick a number. You pick one and that one gets all of the packages in mail.
And the Lions had a flag in the wrong yard for the last two years.
It almost is if there's a signage, I guess I think of, I don't know if I should say this publicly. Okay, when you go to a hotel room and you come to the end of, you know, the aisle before you go to the rooms, it's almost as if you have to have a sign saying east and, you know, this way.
And, and that's the question. Can there be a sign up there that says east and west? Or east and west, whichever side they are on.
Adam and I were looking for.
Well, the only issue with that is, is it's literally in the middle of 16th between Calhoun and Brayton Street. So you would, you would have a street sign right in the middle of that block.
Yes.
And that would, that would make it even more confusing. But I, I can look, I, I can look to see what signs are out there.
Yeah, it would be basically in the middle of the block.
Yeah.
That's where the division is. The division isn't up at the corner where Calhoun is. It's like, it's like on my side of the street, I'm at 800, but my neighbor that shares my driveway is 900. But we have 9th Street comes straight up between us, you know, come, meets our driveway. So that's the designation that you know between eight and nine. There's nothing out there that shows a designation between east and west.
And the current side streets that, that run between 15th and 16th don't even share that.
Right.
Define that line of demarcation. So it's.
You can laugh at me all you want, Adam, that's okay. I'm just saying.
We've actually delivered dumpsters to the wrong houses out there.
Okay, see?
It's not, it's, it, it is, it's confusing.
Okay, all right, that's all I have. Kara, I know you have some stuff you wanted to bring up.
Uh, that was one of them, actually. I had one of, it's from the 103s. Have that issue with the flag, the Lions' flag, so brought that up. Um, and then I had a resident, um, the Golden Years over by, on Clark Street, I believe, by the river traps, the ones adjacent. Uh, I think the, the drive alleyway that, um, they have to turn onto from, was it Clark? That, that alleyway is their ex, access to the, their residential parking. But, um, they indicated the alleyway was, had some.
Issues. Adam, this is the same one I've talked to you about.
That, yeah.
It's an asphalt alley that's all torn up.
Yeah, it's pretty bad. Um, it runs behind or parallel to, uh, 3rd Street.
3rd Street.
It's on the south side.
He knows which one, because I've talked to him.
Okay.
Probably does.
So, yeah, so I, I had a resident, um, talk about that. And then, uh, I did, want to make mention that I was at the cemetery for the Memorial Day service, uh, yesterday, and there was actually a niche plate that was cracked. It was cracked from the rosette clip that holds the plates around there. Um, so I don't know if we can somehow get it covered or somehow fix that or get a new plate or whatever, but it was.
We have it.
Yeah, we have spare parts.
Yeah, because it was, it was crafted around the rosette circular.
Hmm.
And then some of those niche plates, you just touch them lightly and they're, they really rattle. So I don't know if they're loose.
We never checked them when we put them in. I wonder if they needed to be tightened up.
They're, some of them are like really loose, like they feel like they're going to fall out or something. I was going to, it's a service request and. Okay, because, yeah, and then, um, I don't know if I had somebody give me a real live by night comment about why they had to go put this there. I don't know if they meant the, the whole columbarium thing or what, but I noticed that there was gravel in the middle of the circle, but it looked like somebody had driven right through it. So there was.
Well, and that was supposed to be.
Tire tracks.
Yeah.
Right through the gravel.
When they did that, when they sat.
When they sat them in, but I thought they were going to level those out. Adam?
But, yeah, there was.
Were they going to, did they need to bring more gravel into the center of the columbariums to fill in the, uh, crane ruts?
Uh, I don't know what the plan is on that. I haven't, I haven't talked to Nick about anything, so. I don't know.
Okay. So I, I'll send a service request, um, for the cemetery to, uh, tighten and review all niche plates. Um, replace the one that's with that.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, also to have Nick let us know about the, the cleanup of the.
Okay.
The gravel. The gravel and. And it's the columbarium that faces the south, the farthest west, southwest, farthest west, the west one.
Okay.
Um, close to the farthest west corner.
Okay.
So, yeah, I believe that's where it is. I will issue that service request tomorrow after that. Okay, and then we'll do a follow-up, um, if everyone asking what to know, but not before. Okay, because I, you know, another thing I thought about is, um, if, when we get those other two columbariums, there will still be an area for the ceremonies to take place, right? Okay.
Because the other two will sit on those front concrete slabs.
Okay, and they'll still have a clearing or whatever. I know that this is.
Because the slabs are already set.
Yeah.
All right, now is your intent with doing a half moon is to make sure they've got some open space there.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Dave, you have anything? Robbie, do you have anything? Do you have anything?
I have, um, so I had shared, uh, an email from Paul McIntyre. And he had sent an email just communicating, um, uh, input for an additional step, possibly to have, um, a public meeting, uh, with the community with regards to, uh, the fire and the 2080 and rule. Um, and then I also had, um, another discussion as I was downtown. Uh, we were working on setting up, uh, we had some parking issues with the, the farmer's market that were getting those, uh, worked out. Um, and then Jan, uh, Jan, from Jan's Flower Yard visited with me. Um, I've also had some comments from a few other folks about the section there on Spencer and, um, 3rd Street and how busy it is and how difficult it is to see. And they wanted a, they just wanted to make that recommendation again to look at that about having a, a four-way stop. Um, it's not just busy with, um, you know, events or with the festival, uh, it's busy like that, um, all the time. And that's a good thing. We, we've got traffic in our downtown, so that's good. Um, but, and I noticed when I try, I mean, I have walked that, it's busy and, um, Intern Chief Lyra, I mean, they as well have.
They're asking for a permanent four-way stop at that corner like we did at the library corner.
Or, or take up some parking spaces, because I know personally, it's hard to see when everybody's parked in those slants.
Um.
We got to keep inching out, inching out to see.
Well, would you make a note to put that like on our next agenda to talk about? If we then vote on it. Are you?
Or do you, you want public safety to take a look at it?
Okay, you can, you can refer to public safety first.
I do have something.
Again, generally, it's too.
Yeah, send it to public safety. Yes.
Somebody had been commenting about the mechanics down at, you know, Fred's Speed around that corner. How they park really close to that corner.
Oh, yeah.
They don't know if they can get it painted to show that there's no parking from distance to distance on that corner, because they park actually right into.
And on the construction company's side?
On both sides.
And Molina.
Because when you go to turn down play there, they park really close to that corner. And there's a way that we can have that marked out where they cannot, it's only feet. Correct or wrong, is it 10 feet? I think, or is it 10?
You can take a look at it.
Look at it, yeah, but that's actually a very good idea.
Yeah, get it marked up, just. So I, I walked down there the other day and a pickup truck was parked where you couldn't even walk the sidewalk, close sidewalk, side over across the street. And they were parked into it.
I know Lyra's had to go down a few lines and things from down there that.
I think that would be.
I think that would, I think that would leave you alone, alone, right, right as they. Yeah, and I understand what you mean, they park around the corner, I'm like.
Right, yeah.
Well, and we're going to be painting yellow, then up there at Simpson Home that we talked about last winter, that, you know, that corner.
Yes, on the east side of Miller.
On the east, is it?
East side of Miller.
East side of Miller Street at the Simpson Home driveway.
Right before the drive.
Yeah.
Like back towards the school.
Yeah.
There's a sign that, there that says no parking, snow removal. But there needs to be a parking or a yellow zone from here, from that sign to the corner, to the driveway. Because people are still occasionally parking right up to that one.
And the residents, it makes it hard for the lot of Simpson, onto Miller.
Yeah. So if you're going to do yellow markings, do that one up there, too. Okay.
Yes.
Just get the yellow paint now.
Just go get the yellow paint.
That easy, okay.
Get the yellow paint now.
I'm going to, I'm going to go over to the street department.
Take the parking cones for good, and then we go.
So for Adam, I'll just have him follow up on, looking at the alley and then, um, the service requests with these corners.
Corner, no parking. Okay. Anything else? Okay, we're ready to move on. All business. Ordinance number two, zero, two, one, zero, five, zero, four, dash, one, third and final reading of an ordinance establishing regulations of operating golf carts, ATBs, and UTVs in the city of West of the Iowa. Is there a motion?
You got to get it though.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay, you have a motion? Is there a second?
I have a second.
We have a second. Would you like discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, in this, I'd like a breakdown of what's required by the golf cart, the ETB, and the meetings. Instead of now they're just kind of all together.
So would you like it sent back to? Would that go to public safety?
Yeah.
Would you like it sent back to the public safety committee to do that breakdown and then bring it back to us?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else?
And also can we get put in there when the start date's going to be, right, so? Because right now it's past, and it's just open.
That's true.
There should be when it's going to happen.
Do we?
An effective date.
Effective date, because don't, do we have the permit forms or the stickers or any of those things that we're requiring for them to have? So we need some time to order those items. Okay, so we need to pick a effective date. Okay. Okay, roll call. Mr. Smith?
Well, is it to send it back or is?
Yes, it's to.
We have to prove our discipline, don't we?
We have to, we have to, um, vote it down.
We have to vote it down, yes.
Yeah, and I say so.
To send it back to committee.
Correct, to vote it down.
Okay, so you're an a. Kara?
No.
Robbie?
No.
And I'm a no. So it was defeated. Zero and four.
And then we have.
And now we need somebody to make a motion to.
Send it back to, I make a motion to send it back to committee just for revision of the breakdown of the equipment needed.
And then also spark.
Oh, and then a start.
Okay, so Kara has made a motion to send it back to committee for a breakdown of requirements for the, uh, each individual item and an effective date, and I need a second.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, does this have to be read three times after?
Yep, yep.
Yes, we have to start over again. Unfortunately, yes. Okay. Sorry.
So.
It'll be back.
They just want me to keep.
I think it's already started in my neighborhood. Well, that's to be on the council, I think.
That too. New business. Are we ready to move on? New business. Set a date for a work session on June 15th, 2021
Thank you.
Review of the draft fire District 28E agreement and the ambulance rule District 28E agreement.
I want you to make your motion.
Um, motion for June 15th, review of the draft fire District 28E agreement, Ambulance Rule District 28E.
With motion?
Second.
We have a second discussion.
At this time, um, we have, the public safety committee has a meeting set for this Thursday at, um, 7:00 PM. Um, we've invited, um, the trustees, um, fire department chief, sickles, um, and assistant chief. And, uh, along with the committee, I only had one response to accept the meeting, um, by one trustee, uh, just to let you know where we're at with that, um. And so I, we can go ahead and set the, the June 15th, uh, to, but again, we won't know for sure.
It may be premature.
Right. So we can't, we're kind of like treading water until we get.
Well, you got to have meetings because, I mean, I, you can't help that people aren't going to come. But we got to make things happen, I mean, right?
We can set it, and if something, if they have a meeting and something's discussed, then we can always.
So this, this meeting, the work session has been established with, um, with hopes that the, the trustees would, and the, um, fire chief, um, would attend. Uh, that way we can do a review. This isn't passing the 28E.
No, it's just a work session.
This is a, is a final review of the drafts that have been created, and that way we can put it before council, um, in line with our process. So if council has any changes or any input or recommendations, um, because then I'd have to go back to the committee and the, and the trustees again as a whole to have their side of it. Uh, so, I mean, keeping it, you know, and again, I mean, this is depending on whether it's. And again, I mean, this is depending on whether they, we can change, you know, we can notify if we don't have any input from the trustees. We certainly have time to notify you, um, if we've had no one show or any input's been provided on it.
Well, we have one, one of the trustees at that, right?
Yeah.
So there's some.
There's some hope.
There.
And it's only Tuesday.
Correct.
Yeah. But I, I just wanna make mention, uh, for public record that we, um, are, this is June first, and, uh, the current agreement is expiring June thirtieth, which is twenty-nine days from now. And we have made all attempts to try and resolve this issue with instituting a, um, appropriate twenty-eight year agreement and move on, and we haven't even had, uh, a signature back on the proposed twenty-eight year agreement that we submitted to the rule as of yet. Um, there isn't anything else, plus we're trying to meet with the department. There isn't anything else for us to do until, uh, both sides come together, and our side is definitely at the table. Right, so we're just waiting on the other side. In April twenty-fifth, you had a special meeting and you, uh, passed a resolution, uh, to amend that June thirtieth to the September thirtieth. Um, and Councilor McPharney were for it without a return, without a signature of that agreement. I want the general public to realize, without the other party coming forward to sign that agreement to extend that we have brought at the table, there is, there will be no agreement extension because the other half hasn't signed it. So then the service contract is done, June thirtieth. We need, uh.
Well, we even extended it on their request of there going ninety more days because they were gonna be in the field. So we went upon their
Right.
request, and we extended it ninety days at their request, and we still are giving reviews to sign that. That's what we got.
So we, we, we are, I, we've, I think, shown a, a pretty, you know, good display of good faith in trying to come to the table. Well, and again, I mean, you have it set for Thursday, and like you said, you receive one, uh, first amendment, but the word then, and, um, one's better than none, and, um, I don't know, Chair Rock, do you have anything more to add to that?
No, please.
We will do, um, just, just to let, uh, council know, uh, I will be working with communications, um, tomorrow, um, to provide them, um, an update to our, uh, public communication piece, saying, stating that we have this meeting. And, um, I know, and my reporter provided you a brief, uh, part of what the agenda is, is to, uh, talk about the amendments. Uh, the next piece of it is to review the draft twenty-eight year agreements. And then, um, the, the final piece of that is something that, um, the public safety committee had originally talked about from the get-go. Uh, and that was, um, to have a, a consultant, um, specific to look at the fire and the ambulance as operations. Reached out to Pat Calligan, um, we had a team that worked on several of these, specific to, uh, these, these items that we're talking about, and so that is, uh, the other item. Again, just taking that stuff, saying, you know, we wanna work together. If that means bringing in an outside, um, professional source to, to look at that, um, that's, that's what we're here to do. So those are on the agenda, and, and we're hopeful that we'll, we'll get some attendance and, and be able to keep moving forward with this.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to set a work session. All those in favor?
Right.
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero. Resolution two zero two one zero six zero one dash two six dash one. A resolution to approve pay estimate number one in the amount of thirty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents to SG Construction for the Police and City Hall Building Improvement Project. I have a motion.
A second.
And a second discussion. Questions?
So Leo, I see you recommend everything's in order.
Everything is in order. There's a change order that's included, that's coming next on your thing, but that's, um, that's just their very first pay estimate, and everything is in order.
Kara?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Passes four zero. And the next resolution, two zero two one zero six zero one dash two six dash two. A resolution to approve change order number two in the amount of four thousand twenty-five dollars and thirty cents to SG Construction for the Police and City Hall Improvement Project.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
This is a much better number, Leo.
Uh-huh, thi- this is a number that Tara has been.
Yeah. But compared to last time, you would have.
Yes. No, no, the, the architect has been going back and forth with the contractor to get this down in order, and it, it seems like this is reasonable for the things that they had to do.
I, I did have a question on what it means in item number one. Under the description of item number one, is that for the building?
That's for the, and, and Lee, you might have to help me with this, but I believe for the reception desk, when somebody comes in, we wanted to have bulletproof glass, so if it's ever a problem. And, and I assume by lowering it means they have to make it so it's, um, a little longer than what we had in, in the specification.
Like, like lower, like locationally lower?
Correct. Correct. It reaches down further.
I see, okay, got it. And then the idea is to create a pass through. So it'll be lower, so you have. Oh, yeah, 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 okay, yes, yes. That's where it says pass through. Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions?
And just as I said, um, Leo, I did let them know real quick in a work session that, um, Tara and Jacob and Jean, everyone's done a really good job um, of staying on top of, uh, these changes and things when they come up and occur, uh, because it is an older building, we run into, you know, a couple of things on a, sometimes a daily basis, but everybody's quick to respond, even, even the contractors. So I believe everybody's working very well together.
I think, I think, I think the contractor, he's worked with us on a lot of different projects, he's, by no means, he's the easy contractor. I don't think those exist anymore, but he, um, he definitely, um, is very interested in continuing work with B and K, and he's very interested in future work with the city. That's, that's good news.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Dave?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so it passes four zero. The next item is resolution two zero two one zero six zero one dash two seven. A resolution authorizing and approving a loan agreement water revenue refunding bond, twenty twenty-one A, in the amount of one million three hundred thousand. I need a motion.
Motion.
Are we on a motion?
Second.
And a second discussion.
I have Chip Schultz is on, uh, with us just in case if anybody has any questions. If you remember, we spoke at the last meeting, uh, that we have the two local, uh, banks have, uh, take, or have the bonds placed um, with them, and so that's the reason why we have them split. Anything more to add to that, Chip?
Uh, no, that, that's it. This is, this, I would just add only that this is the final council action for both refunding, water revenue refundings, and the planned redemption date then is June twenty-second of the redemption date of the prior debt.
Thank you, Chip.
Thank you.
Dave?
Yeah.
Kara, yes. Bobby?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so it passes four zero. The next one is resolution twenty twenty-one zero six zero one dash two eight. A resolution authorizing and approving a loan agreement water revenue, revenue refunding twenty twenty-one B in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Motion.
We have a motion? Okay, discussion?
Um, again, same as we said before, and if you have any questions, Chip's still with us.
No questions? Bobby?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
I'm a yes. It passes four zero.
Uh, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chip.
Okay. Next item. Discussion and appropriate follow-up on the RFP Bowman and Miller PC to the twenty twenty-one annual audit. This is the auditing, auditing service that we changed to this year. Um, and I believe, Lee, that you're recommending we stay with them one more year.
Yes, I'm recommending that we, um, continue another year. Um, this also part of the recommendation that, that would allow us to do a back-to-back. Uh, we are, um, working diligently, um, I started with Taylor yesterday and am sending over quite a bit of information. Um, our goal is to, uh, hopefully get them here on site, uh, within the next few weeks, uh, so we can finish getting all the information to them and, and get this fiscal year done, and then to go ahead and start on the next fiscal year um, that I'm recommending to approve.
Uh.
So you need a motion?
Yes, please.
Motion to go ahead and, uh, approve Bowman and Miller for, to continue our audit.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero. Update of the proposed projects and program schedules, strategic plan and goal-setting action plan for fiscal year twenty, 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 twenty-two.
I think Jan Elizabeth here.
Elizabeth?
Yeah, um, so included in your packet, this is the time of the, uh, each quarter, I try to do an update for you on the goals and action plan, and then also the, um, the list of proposed projects and program schedule. And if you would look at that, there are just a couple outstanding goals for the city for this fiscal year. It relates to housing and updating your comprehensive plan and land use. And then finally, on that proposed projects and programs, the last few items for this fiscal year are pending, so, and I did report on those for you. So if you don't have any questions, I just wanted to draw your attention to that, not let it get lost in all the reports and everything else for you.
Did someone like to make a motion to receive and file?
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pass four zero.
Lots of work this year.
Yeah.
Okay, discussion and appropriate follow-up on RFP new website design, which Nick presented to us earlier. Um, I guess, uh, I'm gonna give my opinion. I guess I'd like to see us stay with Big Imprint. For now.
Uh, you need a motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and accept Big Imprint. Um, Dave, for the website design?
Second.
Yeah, you have any other discussion that you wanna have about the websites, or what you learned from the, the website?
They cost a lot of money.
Yeah, it's too.
They do, Big Imprint, and all of, everything that we need.
Everything we need right now, for sure, yeah.
I think so, too.
And then, um, once things get, if they get more complicated or we require more, um, services, we can also add on, is how I understand it, correct, Nick? That we can add on later.
It, it allows us to take steps instead of implementing everything at one time.
And that's what I like.
I think, um, I think the biggest thing here is, uh, making sure that we're communicating as a city with the, with the contracted business, um, and making sure that, you know, we have a staff member that is, you know, assigned to stay on, you know, on top of these. It's not that, we didn't have staff members that were, you know, working at it, it's just we're already, they already have other duties, and this sits back, um, in priorities when you've got, you know, other items that are deadlines, so I think we've, um, again, Elizabeth is, and, and Nick and all of us have established those positions, and so now aligning individuals to uh, focus on that, I think that, uh, keeping that communication, um, open with the Big Imprint is gonna, gonna help us.
We have a motion and a second for Big Imprint. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes four zero. Okay, miscellaneous reports. Leo? What you got for us?
Okay, well, number two, um, IDNR did, um, send notes to us, uh, last week, asking how we were coming on getting the brushing and cleaning done, and we reported to them that that will be done at the end of this month. Um, so that means they're still very interested in what's moving forward on the well number two, which I think is a pretty good sign. Uh, tomorrow, meeting with, um, interim manager Hanson and Lee Gertz on some miscellaneous property developments. And Maxon and Rainbow, we'd like to get started on surveying on that, so I was gonna start laying out a contract for that, and we'll move that one forward the next month or so. Um, I know Ally might be reporting on this, but it sounds like, um, the architect Tara from B and K and the library have a contract now to do some improvements. Start on those. And from everything I've already reported on City Hall, the August thirty-first completion date is still set as it is now, so I'll keep an eye on that. That's all I had today.
Let's see if.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Leo? Okay, interim city manager Hanson, do you have anything update that you wanna add to your report?
No, I think I reported, there's just a few items at the very end that I'm talking about that are kind of final quarter items that I'm working on. I'll be, like Leo just said, meeting with him tomorrow and Lee virtually to discuss a couple of those items. Um, and then, uh, I'll be also doing a transition report, so with that list of projects and programs page, um, as you won't lose sight of those other items that are listed there, um, I'll be kind of putting together a transition plan for your next city manager. Um, we have police chief interviews next Thursday. Ready? Any questions from anybody?
Three.
Um, I know that Kara had a question early on with my report, uh, with the employee handbook. When we were talking about, um, personally.
Just.
Work is started on review and updates.
Okay.
Yep, so Elizabeth, um, uh, and I, first Elizabeth reached out to, uh, and I don't know Elizabeth, if you kinda wanna share a little bit about Mary Funk, but, um, with her expertise to, uh, start taking a look at our existing handbook. Um, she has gone through it very diligently and outlined, she has a number of questions, uh, for us to follow back up with, with, um, you know, items that are not in the employee handbook, um, questions in regards if we wanna add additional items. Uh, and those would be, you know, from compliance, um, again, from day-to-day operation, but that's fits the needs of our, you know, our community. Also, um, all of the, uh, items that we passed as far as, um, we, uh, let me see, leave, emergency, um, the, uh, ordinance, or not, well, taking the ordinance to be living, the living required. the ordinance or not, well, taking the ordinance, city living, the living requirements, um, the pandemic, um, working from home, uh, you know, several of those pieces. That, that way we can get it all collaborated into one book and then do a, all, um, an entire employee, uh, training session again with all of those. Is that about right, Elizabeth, I think?
Yeah, and Mary just has, uh, expertise in HR management and so she's had some fresh eyes looking at your policy and procedure manual. That's one of the last items on the list for this fiscal year. We wanted to get that reviewed and brought back to the Personnel Committee very soon. And I think she was, did she already complete, completed, completed, or is it on your desk now, Lee, for review? I just knew we were trying to shoot for mid-June.
Yeah, it's on my desk now. She had about, um, less than a dozen questions before she sent the draft. Uh, just asking to see if there was, uh, certain things that we wanted to have added or omitted from it.
So do you think maybe in a few weeks, the Personnel Committee could maybe review that?
Um, I'm not, not ready to answer that right now. Does that include like the social media policy and that?
Yeah, all that's included.
Yeah, all of this, yeah. I will, I will definitely shoot for it. With the audit being full on right now, um, it's taken up a big part of the day.
Well, I'd just like to say that as a priority, so we get it done.
Me too.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Ed Electric, anything to add?
No, I don't have anything to add. I do, uh, want to say that if, I'm gonna need a timeline when these water guys are gonna be coming in and out of the powerhouse. We can't just have people running in and out without anybody knowing what's, what's going on. So when those water guys, Leo, if they, if you have a timeline, I need it. Or at least get an email or a phone call and let me know when they're coming, because, uh, we, someone needs to be in the powerhouse while they're there.
I've got, I do not have a defined timeline, but I will get it for you, Ed. The, the other thing is that before they work, we should have a sit-down with you and others and just make sure that they know when they can come, when they can't come and all that. So we'll get that taken care of. I'll, I'll give you, I'll send you a couple of emails.
Yeah, that sounds good. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
But, uh, what happened the other day in the power outage? Was it just a transformer? I was just curious. And the outage on Sunday?
Yep, we never found anything. It probably was a squirrel, I suppose, but they went and drove the line on Sunday and then they spent the morning driving the line today and they didn't find anything. So, or than likely, it was a squirrel.
They just tripped the, the whatever?
Yeah, they tripped the breaker. It tripped a breaker in the, mm-hmm.
And just a reminder, um, when I spoke with Ed, uh, to the community, um, I know, you know, they, there was some complaints or there was phone calls going in, um, the utility, the, the emergency phone calls. So again, when Ed and I talked, and it was a good reminder, so it's, you know, we have individuals that are manually driving the full length of these lines. Um, it's not as simple as going and, you know, when you're looking at a, um, a computer that's telling you it's right here, um, there's actually, you know, a manual operation that has to be done. It has to be done safely. Um, it takes time to drive the line and, and try to, you know, find where the errors occurred. Um, they can't turn the breaker back on until they've been able to, you know, locate if there's been an error. So again, I mean, we certainly don't want to inconvenience our utility customers, but at the same time, we gotta make sure, um, that we understand that it's not as simple as just going back and flipping the switch and turning the power on. There are some steps that have to be, uh, taken in that process. Is that right, Ed? That's what we had talked about and.
Yeah, if it, if it's just like a single, like a transformer fuse, it's, you know, you're talking 30 minutes. But if, if it's a line breaker, you're talking, you're looking at an hour to an hour and a half, an hour and a half. It's, that whole circuit has to be drove out and looked, everything looked at before we can turn it on, just for the public safety alone. So, yep.
Good to know, yeah. Yeah, I guess much as well, you just have to give them a video, the, you know, the complexities to go into what it means. Absolutely. Thanks, Ed. Thank you.
Yep.
Adam Streets, anything to add?
Uh, not really. We, uh, did all the sidewalks that I've seen and in this quadrant. Took us a week or so, but we just backfilled the last one today since dirt was dry, but our, our park's good.
Okay, thank you. Chief Mara?
Yeah.
Mara, do you have anything you want to add to your report?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, in, in my report, I was able to obtain data. That's, uh, that's because we were, uh, disabled from, uh, for the Muscom managers, uh, for the call recordings that we couldn't make the calls off our computer. Um, we did that for the reason of we're in merger servers. Uh, they're getting contacted, it was supposed to be this week, this week is the beginning of time to merge the servers. So it'll make it a lot easier for us, or to look up calls and put reports. When that comes together, we'll be able to collect the data, what we need for a more, uh, adequate report. And there's a typo here where it says about, uh, arranging inspections or, uh, digital inspection. Well, we actually started that today on a limited basis. We're using, uh, North Spencer, it's only one car that parks there, so we can do inspection off that and go inside, go in, go in and put the information in the computer. Uh, we want to do three inspections a day at this point, see how that works out for us this month. Other than that, there's nothing else.
Okay, where are you doing the inspections at?
Uh, they just prepared their own Spencer and we look at the vehicle, we just run it. It's very simple, but, uh, it's hard to have them park over at the OPD and us go back and forth with the computer, you know? So we better be just do it on Spencer. So, so far it's not a parking problem. Um, so that's how we're gonna do it for now, a limited basis. See if it works out, see if people start complaining about it all the time. But I don't think it's an issue, we're one car parks every half hour. That would be the issue.
I know, um, we were, and we were out working on some nuisance.
Yes, we did some nuisance violations. I think we, with the addition of the new officer who's on the phone now, uh, that alleviates a lot of the stress of the other officers. We can get back to going back into the nuisance. I didn't want to put too much stress on the two officers, Zach and Kim, you know, because they're being overworked at that point. And so, uh, now we're gonna get back into the nuisance violation, even, uh, we can get back on the nuisance and tell them to pick it up this month also, uh, vehicle inspection.
Anything else?
I'll take a motion to.
Uh, well, I just, there isn't any more, um, the, the, this month, for the rest of this month, the city is not, is open, correct? I just wanted to point out, uh, sometimes it's good to make mention when there's gonna be closures like for holidays and that. Nope, uh, so, um, we have no more, unless we want to bring the holiday. No, no, that's okay. No, we go on and we, um, and we are through our upgrade with, um, the, with the financial software. We went to the cloud-based software last week and, um, we didn't have to be down as long as we thought we were, but then it just took us some time to, to get organized so we could serve. But, um, we were, we continued taking phone calls with our new customers. Um, I will have some more information. We have a new credit card system that ties right into in code and so we all have more of that information down in the report. Is that also for online payments that you open it on? Yeah, website. Not yet to the, to that piece of it. But, um, it's set up so that way when you pay online, it, it is to directly link to your account. So that way, um, it's not going through the online to our cashier that has to print it out and then have to input it manually. Um, it's going directly from you making the payment into the. So it should, um, also, uh, be more efficient from reconciliation too. We, we're still learning too on those things. Um, I, real quick to just, I'm sorry, Sherry is doing well. Um, she was stopped by today. She's been working from home. Um, she's, uh, working on audit rec, or, uh, ambulance reconciliation from OFSB. Um, and then she's pulling some audit reports for us. Um, she has, uh, hopefully can return after the seven, um, if everything goes okay, so.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Motion in a second. We are adjourned. Thank you. I didn't vote. Did you want to vote on it? Do you want to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going home.